Chair Christie? Chair Christie, hi, this is Sarah. So, we are waiting for the new Commissioner Sandra Peña Sarmiento. She should be joining in just a minute. And then I am following up with Commissioner Rivera. But those are the last two that we're waiting for. If you'd like to wait just a couple more minutes for them to join. If not, we do have...
We have our attorney Lisa, but we don't have Vince. Then we don't have Vince.
Vince is on his way down. And we do have other staff members. Bernie, Principal Planner, is on the line. And Min will be calling in. I believe he might be in. Min, are you on the line? Chair Christie, it'll just be one to two, uh, two more minutes and we will have everyone on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Sarah, this is Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
I got a text from Melanie. Melanie saying that she can hear us, but she, um, I think Sarah needs to activate me to listen. Maybe, maybe she can't. Is she muted, maybe?
I'm gonna have Melanie NIT. See if we can unmute her. Melanie McCann?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, okay.
This is Melanie.
So Melanie Torres was able to fix that.
Hi, Melanie. Hi, how are you?
Hi, Melanie.
Hi, everyone.
Vince Fregoso has arrived. And we're just waiting for a couple more people. If you can hang tight, we'll be back in just one to two minutes. Thank you. Hi, Min, thank you for joining. We are just waiting for Commissioner Rivera and Commissioner Peña Sarmiento. We'll wait about another minute or so. And then Chair Christie, we do have a quorum. So if you want to begin the meeting, you're free to do so at, um, at this time or when, when you indicate.
Okay, no problem. How do we start the video? Do I just click on or what? Because how do we get the, the American flag?
Um, we can, we can, um, we can go live on our end and we have the, the flag here. Uh, if you just...
We can go live on our end and we have the, the flag here. Uh, if you just go live on our end.
And also Commissioners, please make sure that your YouTube is on mute or we will receive feedback.
Uh, how do you do that?
On your, let's see, where, how, where will it show mute on YouTube?
On the bottom left, on the bottom left of the screen, to the right of the arrow.
So like in the same window that you're viewing, there's a, there's a little volume thing that you move back and forth. So if, if you're looking at your, your YouTube stream, um, there should be a, uh, a little speaker icon in the same window you're viewing the stream that allows you to move the, uh, the volume back and forth. So if you can just go ahead and, uh, put it all the way to the left and mute it, uh, so that, that we don't get, uh, feedback through the, uh, through the, through the call.
Yeah. I found it, thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Okay, um, Sarah, are you there?
I am.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and start the meeting. And then as Commissioner Sarmiento and Rivera come on the line, we will then include them, okay?
Yes, that sounds great. Can you put it so they can see us for the flag?
Okay, um, I would like to call the special meeting of July 30th, 2020 to order at, on, um, at 4:37 PM. Uh, Commissioner Hiddardale, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Would, everybody please stand. Can you hear me? Yeah, yeah. Where's the flag?
Oh, can we put the flag?
There are flags.
We're moving the flag to be in front of the camera, just one second, please. There we go. Can you see it? No, it needs to...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there it is.
Thank you.
There it is.
Now let us pledge allegiance to the flag. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. What happened? What happened? Okay, uh, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Christie?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Hiddardale?
Here.
Commissioner Marashi?
Here.
Commissioner Peña Sarmiento? Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rush?
Present.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Present.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, now I invite the Commissioner Sarah to describe the way the public can access this, uh, virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair Christie. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaana-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID 315965149, followed by pound. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial *9. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. When you are called on, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you, Chair Christie.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Uh, I'm sure that everyone received, I don't know if, um, Ms. Diaz or Chris Smith is on the phone.
Chair, I can call for comments on non-agenda items at this time. If there are members that would like to comment on a non-agenda item, please press *9 now. We do not have anyone on the line that would like to comment on a non-agenda item. There were two written comments submitted on non-agenda items regarding the Cypress Fire Station. And those were submitted, uh, I'm sorry, distributed to the Commission and posted on the website.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Um, these two items, uh, I have, um, asked, uh, Executive Director Mintai to, um, put this in a staff report that he's going to be talking about this afternoon in our meeting. So that was moved there, okay?
Mr. Christie, I am going to provide an update during the staff comment regarding the Cypress Fire Station.
Okay, as your, in your, um, comments, staff comments, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. I'm just going to do A for the approval of the minutes for the prior, uh, meeting. Is there a motion? And please state your name.
Bill Schaefer, Vice Chair, move approval of the, uh, Item A calendar.
Danell Hardy, I'll second that. Danell, thank you. Bill, thank you. Um, Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Will you call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hiddardale?
Yes.
Commissioner Marashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña Sarmiento? Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rush?
Yes, I can.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Yes.
Chair Christie?
Yes.
And I apologize...
I have a comment, um, or a question on here. Now, Commissioner Sarmiento, if she was on the line, would have to abstain. So, um, Lisa, how do I do this? Well, I have six for, one absent. How do I do her abstentions? How do I classify that?
But we actually, uh, Chair Christie, we actually do allow people to vote even if they weren't present. They're not necessarily attesting to everything in the minutes, but they are allowed to vote. So in this case, she would just be considered absent.
And two absence votes, okay, fine.
And I...
Okay, yeah.
Chair Christie, I do believe that, um, Commissioner Peña Sarmiento is now on the line?
Yes, hi.
Okay, great.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, Chair Christie, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here.
It's an honor to have you, okay? All those, um, okay. How do you vote? Yes or no? I'm gonna put you as a yes. How's that, Commissioner Sarmiento?
Yes, that's good, yes.
Okay, all right. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, the motion carries seven, uh, seven yes and one, uh, absence, okay? Uh, we will come back to B for, excuse, uh, absence, uh, in case Commissioner Rivera joins us later on, okay?
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's the end of consent calendar. Okay, now we're moving on to the business calendar. Uh, I could see, I could see Historic Resource Commission. Do I, what happened? Okay, uh, feeling, okay, calling in. Uh, where are we on? We're on page two, uh, on the screen. Is there another page or where should we be?
So the, uh...
Okay, there we go. Okay, so I'm on the business calendar. There we go. Okay, uh, "The formal action by the Historic Resource Commission shall become effective after ten-day appeal period, unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal actions will become effective on the day following the hearing and decision by the City Council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the commission must be filled, uh, filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within ten days of the date of the commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual or group." Okay? Uh, now, the hearing protocol. Now I will review the process for the, uh, public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. A, the staff will result, present a presentation and answer questions from the commission. B, the public hearing will be open. C, the applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to fifteen minutes. D, members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. E, the applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will then, will be closed. Discussion will return to the commission for formal action taken to, uh, to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. A, state your name and address strictly voluntarily. State whether you support, oppose, are, are, or are neutral to the proposal. B, your statements should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. This is the time and place to consider Item Number One, Historic Exterior Modification Application Number 2020-05 for the property located at 1722 North Heliotrope Drive. Please note, discussion on this matter is final unless appealed within ten calendar days. Before we begin, do any Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item?
This is Commissioner Marashi, and I would like to disclose that I did meet with Roy and Jan Reimer, the owner of the property, and looked it over and discussed the project with him.
Thank you, Commissioner Marashi. Anyone else?
Uh, this is Bill Schaefer, and I'd like to just, that, uh, this was my listing when they bought the property. Um, and at that time, we discussed the possibility of, um, expanding the existing half-bath that was previously added.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, okay. The staff will now provide a brief presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, this is Staff Member Pedro Gomez, presenting tonight. The first item for your consideration is a request to permit exterior modifications to the historic structure located at 1722 North Heliotrope. The property is located on the west side of Heliotrope Drive in the Flor Park neighborhood. The property is known as the Francine Mahdi House and is individually listed as number 667 on the Santa Ana Register of Historical Properties and categorized as key. The Francine Mahdi House has distinctive architectural features of the late colonial revival style and was built in 1938. The late colonial revival house is characterized by its, by its L-shaped plan and cross-gabled roof with moderate pitch and shallow eaves, uh, which is clad in wood shingles. The asymmetric exterior features smooth stucco cladding with horizontal wood boards at the gable ends beneath the roof eaves and a brick chimney at the east elevation. Uh, moreover, the windows are multi-light, double-hung, wood sash with decorative wood plank shutters. And then the character-defining features include, uh, the materials and finishes, which include stucco, horizontal wood board siding, the roof configuration, the massing and composition, the entry doors and windows, and the architectural detailings, which include shutters, gutters, and the simulating eve returns. The proposed exterior modifications will include a 62-square-foot master bath addition on their first floor with a 35-square-foot interior bath remodel. Uh, in order to accommodate the addition, the applicant is proposing to demolish two walls of an existing powder room along north and west elevation, as well as an existing window along the west elevation. The applicant would extend the existing bath towards the western rear property line by six feet and to the northern right property line by one foot to accommodate the master bath. The proposed addition would be approximately 10 feet in height and would include two new wood double-hung windows to match the existing, as well as new exterior plaster and built-up flat roof with a gutter. All work is proposed to be located to the rear of the property. The next slides provide an overview of the proposed work. Uh, here you can see that the proposed site plan, um, shows the area located towards the rear of the property. And the next couple of slides show the existing and proposed floor plans, uh, which show the proposed extension. These next couple of slides show the proposed exterior modifications along the west rear elevation and then the north right elevations. The proposed exterior modifications are considered a rehabilitation project and as such were evaluated against the TEN criteria of Secretary of Interior Standards for the treatment of historic properties. Uh, staff determined that the project complies with the Secretary of Interior Standards. The analysis found that the proposed addition would be compatible and consistent with the existing architectural elements that reflect the original style. The proposed addition is located at the rear, uh, in an area that is not readily visible from the public right away. Uh, an important spatial relationships characterizing the late colonial revival architectural style would not be disturbed as the addition is only a single-story addition positioned to the rear of the existing house and will not alter the existing roof line. The new addition will be differentiated from the old with the flat roof and gutter, allowing the addition to appear subordinate to and not overwhelm the existing massing while also preserving the historic sense of the steeply pitched roof line. With that, staff recommends that the HRC adopt a resolution to approve a certificate of appropriateness for Historic Exterior Modification Application Number 2020-05. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Does, uh, any, uh, Commissioner have any questions of staff at this time?
Um, this is Commissioner Schaefer. I just have more point of clarification. The existing outer room that's on the back of the house was, appears to be a previous addition. Probably wasn't original. In fact, I think there's a permit for when it was added on to the house. So there's already been a slight modification to the back of the house. This just basically is enlarging that addition on the back. It is not visible from the front through the street at all as there's a bay window down the side of the house truce more than the one-foot bathroom foot. So just as I was...
I'm sorry, uh, could, could staff put, put up what Commissioner Schaefer, uh, is referring to? Could you put that up on the screen?
So on the screen, you should be seeing Page Eight, uh, which shows the existing floor plan. The existing floor plan shows the kind of dotted lines, uh, which are representative of a proposed demolition. So, um, he's referring to that addition, uh, which shows kind of like a powder room or half-bath. And then the proposed addition would be essentially an expansion of that area.
Okay. Okay, there. Thank you so much. Uh, any other Commissioners have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, if not, uh, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication?
No written communication received.
Okay, all right. Um, this is now a time for the public hearing is now open. That's my little nod to say open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter? Is the applicant on the line?
Just one moment, we will unmute her. Jane, please, go ahead.
Okay, um, yes, thank you so much for, uh, to the Commission for holding this meeting. We very much appreciate the possibility of moving forward with this. Um, I just wanted to basically let you know that, um, I'm here if you have any additional questions. Pedro did a great job in the summary. Happy to answer any questions right now.
Okay, thank you so much. So glad to have you here. Um, does any, has any Commissioner have any questions of the applicant at this time? Don't everybody rush to the phones. Okay, here we go. All right, if not, then we will now take phone comments from the public. All right, if not, then we will now take phone comments from the public. Madam Secretary, do we have any others that would like to comment?
If you would like to speak on this matter, please dial *9 now. We will wait a few seconds to see if there is anyone that would like to speak. We do have one caller. Caller with the last three numbers of 785, please state your name and your position on the matter.
This is Jan Reimer. I'm the, one of the owners of the home along with my husband. And I just wanted to thank you for considering this. And we do appreciate the work and effort that you put in because this neighborhood is very dear to us and speaking of history, we understand how important that is. So thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reimer, for being with us today. So glad to have you, to be with us on the, on this phone call, okay? Anyone else, Madam Secretary?
Chair, we do not have anyone else who has indicated that they'd like to speak on this matter.
Okay, no problem. And then, then at this time, then I will declare that the public hearing is now closed. Now closed, guys. Does the commission have any final questions of staff? Do announce yourself, please. Nope? Okay, is there a motion to approve this matter?
This is Commissioner Murashi, and I would like to make the motion that we adopt the resolution of the Historic Resource Commission of the City of Santa Ana approving the certificate of appropriateness for the property located at 1722 North Heliotrope Drive, Historic Exterior Modification Application Number 2020-05.
Thank you so much.
I second that.
Who was the second?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Schaefer, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kane. Moved by Commissioner Murashi, second by Vice Chair Schaefer. All those in favor with the secretary, please call the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hiddardale?
Yes.
Commissioner Murashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña Sarmiento?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rivera? Sorry. Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Yes.
Chair Christie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with Commissioner Rivera absent.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Reimer. Let's give them a hand, everybody. Come on. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you coming into us for this modification and that you respect our standards and you respect the process we have for doing modification, and we really appreciate that. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much for making this meeting happen. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Now we're moving into... I'm sorry, guys. Administrative matters is what I have next. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Chair Christie?
Okay, very good. Okay, under the administrative matters, we have the nomination of two Historic Resource Commissioners to participate in the 2020 City of Santa Ana Historic Preservation Awards Ad-Hoc Committee. Pedro, you're up.
Just one moment. He is coming back to the microphone.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This next request is to have the commission select amongst themselves two representatives to participate in the ad hoc committee to review the awards that, award nominations that have been submitted for the 2020 Historic Awards Preservation. At this time, we'd like to request the commission to decide among two of the commissioners. As you may know, the commissioners will be joined by a professional in the field to have a total of three ad hoc committee members who will be voting on the applications received.
Okay, okay. The floor is now ocean, ocean, open for nominations for two of our commissioners for the Historic Preservation Award Ad-Hoc Committee. I would, I would like to nominate Commissioner Hardy and Hiddardale.
Hello, Madam Chair, this is Janelle Hardy. I, I would like to nominate our new Commissioner Sandra Peña Sarmiento. And I'm going to bow out because I have done it three years in a row and I would like to have the opportunity to nominate this year because of...
I'm sorry, Janelle, I can barely hear you.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, Janelle. Janelle, I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
That's a little better, yeah.
Okay. I, could you hear that I was wanting to nominate Sandra? Hello?
I'm sorry. What? Can you come to your phone?
Make sure that your YouTube's are all muted, okay?
Okay. Yes, my YouTube is muted.
Okay, you sound better now.
I sound better? Okay. It's not across the room anymore. All right. I'm sorry. Let me start over. I would like to nominate our new HRC Commissioner Sandra Peña Sarmiento. And I wish to bow out. Thank you, Alberta, for nominating me. But this year, I would like to have the opportunity to actually get a nomination because as an ad hoc committee member, I am not able to submit a nomination.
Okay, no problem. So we have two people on the floor, Commissioner Hiddardale and Commissioner Sarmiento. Are there any other nominations?
Alberta, Madam Chair, this is Larry Hiddardale. I visited last year and I'd be glad to do it again. But if someone would like to volunteer or would prefer to nominate someone else, certainly are members of the commission that are more qualified to do this than I am. So I don't really need to do it. I'll do it if, you know, if anyone else is particularly able or interested in doing it.
Okay. I know that we have some commissioners that are thinking about nominating, which nullifies their, but is there anyone else that would like to be on this commission? All right, hearing none. Then Larry, guess what? Okay, I would like to bring forward...
I can just say one other thing. For me to meet, it would have to be in a virtual format. I'm really not going out now during this coronavirus crisis. So I could certainly meet by Zoom or some other type of virtual format, but I really wouldn't feel comfortable with the actual physical meeting.
Staff, how is that done?
Yes, the meeting will be held in a virtual setting.
Does that answer your question, Larry?
Yes.
Commissioner, okay, all right. We have the nomination for Commissioner Hiddardale and Commissioner Sarmiento. All those in favor, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hiddardale?
Yes.
Commissioner Murashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña Sarmiento?
Yes, and thank you, Janelle, for the nomination.
Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Yes.
Chair Christie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero with one absent Felix Rivera.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner. Way to go. Let's give them a hand. No. Okay. All right, now, we've done that, we've done that. Okay, now we move into the election of officers for the Historic Resource Commission for the term 2020 to 2021. The first up is elected chairperson for the... Okay, for the, I have on, on the thing, it has 2019. That should be 2020 to 2021, right?
Yes, on the script.
That's correct.
Yes, on the script, 2020 to 2021 term.
Right. On the agenda, it has the wrong date, okay. Nomination will now, the floor is now open for nomination for chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
This is Larry Hiddardale. I nominate Alberta Christie.
Okay. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Hardy. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. If not, then if there are no more nominations, the nominations are now closed. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hiddardale?
Yes.
Commissioner Murashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña Sarmiento?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Yes.
Chair Christie?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero with Felix Rivera absent.
Thank you one and all. Thank you so much. We really appreciate this, okay, going forward. Now the, now the floor is open for nominations for Vice Chair. I would like to nominate Ms. Murashi for Vice Chair.
This is Commissioner Murashi, and I thought long and hard about this. And I don't think we would have had the HRC recommendations to the city council unless Tim Rush had pushed it through. And so I, all hard, all hundred percent of being in, I would like to see Commissioner Rush as Vice Chairperson.
Okay, then we have a nomination for Commissioner Rush. Is there a second?
This is Vice Chair Schaefer. Second that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Is that Bill?
Yes. This is Bill, and I second that motion.
Okay, very good. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, then since there's no more nominations, I am closing the nomination period. Madam Chair, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hiddardale?
Yes.
Commissioner Murashi?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña Sarmiento?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Yes.
And Chair Christie?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero with Commissioner Rivera absent.
Congratulations, Tim. Way to go.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your very kind words to add. That was, that was very much appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, now, moving on, at the end of the business calendar, we'll move into a work-study session. The item on the work-study calendar is discussion on the general plan update Historic Preservation Element. Staff will now present a, provide a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Vice Chair and members of the HRC. This is Vince Fregoso. I'm going to give you a quick 10-second overview and then I'm going to turn it over to Melanie McCann, and she will walk you through the presentation. But as you recall, a few months back at a previous meeting, you had inquired about the general plan, and we gave you a brief update. And we mentioned to you that we're going to give you a chance to preview the Historic Resources Element here. So what you have before you, which sent out about two weeks ago, was the Historic Preservation Element, the draft. And Melanie McCann put together a PowerPoint presentation that's going to walk you through a little bit of background and history of the general plan, what we've done in the past few years to where we're at today. Then at the end, we're going to open it up and receive some of your comments on the draft element that you have received already. So Melanie, are you ready?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let me, let me know if I'm not loud enough or if I'm not clear, please. Well, good evening, Historic Resources Commissioners. I'm pleased to be able to present this information to you tonight. And as our lighting manager mentioned, this is a preview, if you will, to the draft Historic Preservation Elements that will be going public in mid-August with the rest of the elements. If you could move the slide, please. Next slide.
Oh, keyboard, sorry.
That is a lovely picture, though. We hate to see it go. So briefly, what we'll talk about tonight is just the basic purpose and the elements of the general plan moving forward, the organization of the documents that you receive, a few highlights of the policies and implementation actions that were in the document, and then open it up for discussion and your feedback. So as you probably know, the general plan provides a long-term policy guideline for the physical development, quality of life, economic health, and sustainability of our community. The horizon here is for 2045. There are 12 elements that are being proposed, proposed in this update. The ones on the left on the screen are those that are required by state law. Those on the right are optional. And the one that's got the color to it is the Historic Preservation Element, which we're very pleased to be able to bring forward. So here's the timeline of some of the general plan activities. You can see it started in 2015, and the policies and such that are in the document came forward from community input. 2017, a general plan advisory group over a year met and deliberated over the draft. And then that turned into 2018, we had a policy framework that was shared with council and is on our website. And we're moving forward to... council and is on our website, and, uh, we're moving forward to now in 2020 for a draft. So as far as the organization of the document, which you, you've looked at, uh, each of the elements will have a small section on community considerations, so that's what we heard from the public. Then each will have a pol- a policy framework, um, and then implementation actions. And I just got bumped out, you guys. So hold on. Sorry, I'm, I'm, uh, telecommuting from home, and I just got bumped out of this.
Bernie Carballo is also on standby. He can-
So-
Assist us as well.
So Vince, I, I can see the PowerPoint on my home computer, so I can still talk through it.
Okay.
So, okay, so here we go. So the organization of the document. Um, so we talked about there's implementation actions, it's just a couple of pages in the very back, and then each element has figures and tables, and then at the bottom, as you saw here, there's related items or related studies that in some cases are part of the environmental impact report, uh, but help support the element. Next slide. I can't see what it is, but I'm assuming you're on the next slide. So, um, so this is picture of our courthouse. I mean, that's what you're seeing. And, um, uh, so the organization of the document, the intent was that it's, um, it's lean and mean, if you will. Um, the idea was that it be very graphic, visual, and really just include the core goals, policies, and, and basic parts, um, of what drives our vision forward. I'm going to go to the next slide, if you would. Vince, are you on the next slide?
Yes, you should say that.
Yes.
Okay, so policy framework?
Implementation plan.
Part is the pol- Page seven, perfect, thank you. Um, all right, so then the policy framework includes the goals and the policies, and then as you might have seen, for each policy, we also recognize the core value that's associated with that policy. So there's five core values that were created over the outreach and affirmed by the community, and so those are, those are acknowledged in each of the policies. Slide eight, please.
Ready.
So this is the, slide eight, the implementation plan. For each one, it's on the left column, it identifies the goals, and of course, we spell out the actual implementation plan, and on the far-right column, we identify a lead city agency, and ultimately put in a timeframe, 2020, not 2020, but probably 2021, 22, ongoing, that sort of thing. Uh, slide nine, please. Okay. When you get to slide nine, you'll see an example of the figure, um, and it shows, of course, our historic resources, our landmark key, and contributive structures, and then it outlines for our three historic districts, and we, that would include French Park, downtown, and then our SC40 Hennington Park. Next slide to ten. Are we on ten? So the, slide ten, um, we just want to highlight something that you may or may not be aware of. State law, um, SB 1000 requires that all general plan update include, um, um, an environmental justice component. So the first thing cities need to do is identify where our disadvantaged or environmental justice communities are located. The, uh, area in pink is the area that is identified with both characteristics of Santa Ana. It includes seventeen census tracts, and they're areas that have a higher risk of, uh, environmental pollution, plus the economic, uh, factors that, uh, create a disadvantage. And then, um, in those areas, I'll just highlight a couple things. The cities, um, is asked to incorporate policies to reduce environmental health, to emphasize outreach with these communities so they can improve the decision-making process that affects them. And then the last point at the bottom is that there are policies that prioritize improvements and projects within these disadvantaged areas, so you can, this is just a quick glance at where our resources are in comparison to those disadvantaged areas. Slide eleven. So assuming you're on slide eleven, um, what the next few slides will be is just walking through some of the, a few of the policies and actions. So there's three goals that are encompassed in the element. First one is to preserve and enhance Santa Ana's historic areas and resources, to maintain a unique sense of place. This is one policy example, that's to explore opportunities to preserve neighborhoods with largely intact historic buildings and character through the creation of historic districts, identification of historically sensitive areas, or neighborhood context-sensitive design standards. Go to the next slide. So slide twelve, uh, gives an example of helping to achieve that goal and policy, and that is to update historic design standards for preserving historic setting and context, incorporating best practices, and also have it relate to landscape design, front yard fences, and other property, um, features. So, uh, this would be goal two, and it talks in terms of promoting the city's cultural and historic resources to advance Santa Ana's role in Southern California history. So one of the, um, one of the policies could achieve that is to promote economic development through heritage education and the promotion of tourism. Next slide, fourteen. Um, and so one of the specific implementation actions that could further that is to create and expand upon our citywide catalogs of public art, including murals, sculptures, utility box art, for use in promoting awareness of Santa Ana's rich historic and cultural resources. So if we go on to slide fifteen, are we all seeing slide fifteen? Goal three?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, good. Thank you. Um, so goal three is, uh, to develop, implement, and maintain a nationally recognized historic preservation program. And to do that, uh, one policy to further would be to maintain a comprehensive program to inventory and preserve historic and cultural resources, including heritage, landscape, and trees. Next slide sixteen. Okay, and back. Great. So that, slide sixteen. So, um, and then the action related to that is to update and expand our existing, um, historic survey program to identify potential historic resources for placement on the register and those that are at risk of losing historic value. Next slide. So at this point, um, that, that just touches on three of the, you know, obviously the three goals and some sample policies. This particular slide was kind of just a pause to say that, that as staff is, uh, looking at the element, we, we identified a couple of things that might be helpful to enhance it further. One was to in, um, include an im- some more imagery reflecting our culture and our people, and, um, also potentially having a policy that, um, connects to archaeological resources and, um, identifying them and promoting their value as part of our history. And I'd offer that, that picture in the middle, oh, if you could go back just real quick, it'll just take a second. The picture in the middle, well, the picture that was in the middle, um, that was the, um, by Frederick Eli, and that one's placed in the middle, not because it's people, but it, it represents a touch of a person, of Rob Richardson, who, uh, is part of our Santa Ana's deep history, and that wrote the book on Frederick Eli. Thanks, next slide, please. The next slide just touches on the next step, which, uh, hopefully you're familiar with, that coming up Friday and Saturday, we have two virtual workshops to give folks a preview of not just the historic element, but the other elements, some of the key highlights before it's released in mid-August. Uh, the environmental impact report related to the general plan is to be out, uh, very early in August, and then City Council Study Session, August 18th, and Planning Commission Study Session, August 24th, to further the discussion and, um, moving the general plan, uh, effort forward. So with that in mind, uh, we wanted to leave it open to discussion, your comments, your thoughts on, on what you're able to review on the draft document. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, does any commissioners have any questions for... Okay, three participants have raised hands. Okay. Okay, I guess I go to the secretary. I guess we have three people who want to comment on, on, on this.
Yes. Caller with the last three numbers of five, two, three, please state your name and your comment.
Hello, uh, this is Manny Escamia. I, I, can you guys hear me okay? Yes, we can. Okay, perfect. Um, so, uh, just having you all, uh, you know, well, I guess first off, I think the, uh, general plan team's doing a wonderful job, really excited that we have a historic preservation element, uh, for this next general plan. Uh, I'm hoping that you all received my email. I submitted it a little bit earlier today. I wasn't sure if, um, that was received by the secretary and distributed. Um, but I can just go over it really quickly. Um, you know, basically just, uh, kind of highlighting some things that I think we need to make sure to include in the historic preservation element, uh, including the, um, identification of sites related to civil rights history in the city, so the Mulkey Reitman Apartments, the Mendez Family Home, and the Ruben Salazar Home, uh, I think are all potential sites that we could include in, in a consistent update. And to that end, uh, there was some interest from teachers and students at Santa Ana Unified, uh, to get some of the students there to actually do the historic research to nominate one of these homes, so, um, looking forward to working either with staff or directly with commissioners to figure out ways that we can get, um, some of these important civil rights monuments, uh, in our own city, um, onto our historic register. Uh, so there is definitely some interest there, and, uh, yeah, I believe you all have my contact information. Um, and then just to add some other items, you know, I think the, the other thing that we're maybe not taking a look at are the preservation of, uh, city-owned historic assets, so like that email, uh, from Cecilia, uh, Cecilia, I'm trying to remember who, uh, who exactly emailed earlier, uh, with the preservation of the Cypress Street Firehouse. I think that's a very important, uh, structure that we have, uh, control over, uh, that we want to be able to preserve. Uh, but also, uh, that the city hall is, uh, almost coming up on its fifty-year anniversary, right? I think it was like, uh, you know, groundbreaking was in nineteen seventy, and the final dedication was in seventy-three, so kind of a consideration there. Um, I know that at least, uh, one council member was, uh, you know, into the idea of no longer using the city hall, um, so, but I, I think it is a very important structure to, to save and preserve. Uh, also along with the, um, I guess the refurbishment that's going on over at the Santa Ana Public Library at the main branch, um, so I don't know, um, how we're kind of making sure that that remains also, uh, historically intact. Um, and I, I think I was pleasantly surprised that, uh, the murals, uh, and public art made it into the, uh, presentation, so, you know, with the preservation of, in Medio Vasquez's, uh, murals over at Memorial and Angels Park, I think those would be really great, uh, additions to the city's local, uh, character. Uh, and then also kind of thinking the long-term, um, you know, the building that you all usually meet in, um, with the raw sanics, uh, it actually covers up, uh, a really important portion of Sergio Caddis's concrete mural on the, uh, side facing the library, so it's underneath a kind of a layer of speco and metal. Um, so I know long-term, with the kind of revitalization of the civic center, you know, what we can do to, uh, restore that work, and it is definitely a much more long-term plan. Uh, but yeah, that's, uh, it's all there in the, the comments, and I definitely would love to discuss, uh, in more detail, but I think my three minutes are up, and if they're not, um, well, thank you for, for, for the time, and, uh, hope you are all well, uh, during COVID.
Madam Secretary, what was the name of the speaker?
Manny Escamia.
Thank you so much. Madam Secretary? Anyone else?
No one else has indicated that they'd like to speak on this matter, Chair.
Okay, uh, moving on, does, does the, uh, uh, commissioners have any questions to staff or comments?
Uh, yes, for commissioners to speak.
Hello?
Yes, this is Commissioner, uh, Penya Sarmiento. Uh, I just wanted to ask, ask a question about the presentation.
Go right ahead.
Yes, is there, uh, is there something in this for a historic assessment, asset assessment? Uh, is there some kind of a list of historic properties, uh, that could be city-owned properties or already privately-owned properties that would be protected? It's great that there's a historic, uh, element, but I wanted to see if there was any, any plans for actually listing, like making a list that would be protected. I can try and address that, that comment. Can you hear me? This is Melanie. Yes. So if I understand, uh, the question correctly, I don't know if it's, if it's related specifically to city, um, city sites, but one of the policies and actions was to, um, to make a priority to resurvey the city, if you will, and to identify those maybe that are not already on our list. Um, obviously, we have several properties that are on our list, but to identify those that are still candidates, still have historic character, be it for their physical or, as, um, Manny Escamia mentioned, for the events or the people associated. Um, so that is, that's why it's one of our implementation actions for council to affirm that that is something that they want staff to direct their efforts to do. Does that answer your question? Thanks, Melanie. So what's that implementation effort called, and would it include murals as well as properties? Uh, let's see, I can look at the, the implementation. I can, I can see the actual implementation, it's the one that was in the presentation, actually. And, um, you know, I think that's, that's, uh, something that we can make sure is worded in the policies or actions, because we want to make sure that, uh, some that might be familiar with the McCray sign that was, uh, lost, if you will, uh, there's an opportunity to include things other than just structures, could be signs, could be mural, could be what any, whatever the, um, the policy, um, adopted policy is. So I, I'll take that as a comment to, um, think, incorporate that possibly. Is someone trying to speak there?
Does anyone else have, uh, any comments for, to the staff? Uh, Melanie, I'd just like to know, could you send this, uh, out to the commissioners, uh, how to, uh, uh, for, you know, the, uh, for me, the August first virtual, um, um, presentation from ten to noon? Can you send us the information of how to access that? Or, um, the other date, I didn't write that one down, but anyway.
Yeah, there's one this, this Friday evening at six o'clock, and then, um, Saturday at ten o'clock, and if, I can, we can certainly send that to all the commissioners, and in the meantime, if you go to the website for general plan update, it'll take you to a link that'll take you where you can register for the meeting, and then it, and it'll provide you access, access code.
Okay, so you can get that out to us? Greatly appreciated, so that we can-
Absolutely. Absolutely, we'll follow up on that for you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, yes, this is Commissioner Hardy.
Go ahead, you know?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that, um, thanks Manny for bringing up all these points. I think they were excellent. Um, and I think he was referring to Selica Diaz that, um, sent in a comment about the, uh, preservation of the, um, Cypress Fire Station, and also, uh, Chris Smith. And I also, um, did send a letter to, um, the mayor and the council people about the fact that during their discussion at a previous city council meeting, they, they all but, you know, they never mentioned the, uh, Cypress Fire Station and the discussion of historic buildings and- they never mentioned the Cypress Fire Station and the discussion of historic buildings. So we really need to press forward and make sure that we take some action there. But anyway, thank you, Manny, for touching on all these points. They're excellent.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and then that will conclude the end of the...
Oh, sorry. Sarmiento again, yeah. I just wanted to also concur with Commissioner Hardy. Is there any way that we can, you know, take some action on the Cypress Street Fire Station or go through a process to declare it historic?
I think that is going to be addressed, Commissioner Sarmiento, under the executive director's report. I asked him to handle that under that report, okay? And that's going to be coming up, okay? Anyone else?
Madam Secretary, we will be receiving the Manny's email, correct?
I have not, Chair Christie, I did not receive an email from Manny Eskamia, but we could follow up and see if we can get a copy of that and send it out to you guys.
Okay.
That would be great, a hard copy would be great, if you...
Yeah, that would, which I thought it might have came in after we started the meeting or something, because I didn't receive any letter or anything like that.
It has not come in yet, but the second item I wanted to mention real quick was that santa-anna.org, the main city webpage, if you go down to middle of the screen events, there it has all the information of links to the virtual community workshops on the general plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, all right. Moving right along with the comments, this is the end of the work study, okay? Now we're going to our executive director, Min Thai.
Thank you, Chair Christie, and good evening, Historic Commission. First of all, I'd like to welcome our newest commissioner, Commissioner Peña Sarmiento. Welcome to the HRC. We did have a chance to speak earlier, and as I mentioned, it will be, I think, a fun and exciting year as we'll be working towards quite a few changes with historical preservation in the city, so welcome aboard. We have a short response presentation for you tonight regarding the historic commission, recommendation to the city council, and we want to report back. After that report, I will have several items to also update the commission and including the Cypress properties. So I will let the agenda item go first, and then I will do my report afterwards. So Vince, if you can go forward with the report back.
Yes, thank you, Min. Again, hello, commission members. This item is a follow-up to all the work you did over the past several months, where you put together that memorandum to the council asking for some additional duties and responsibilities of the HRC. At the last meeting in, it was June, I believe, the council approved everything that was recommended, and this slide here that you have before you gives you kind of a little quick little summary of what had occurred. So we have it broken down into short-term, midterm, and long-term actions. As far as the short-term ones, one that we have done, we did as part of the budget process this year, took effect July 1, was we had the fees reduced. So now you have the listing fees for historic structures, and the Mills Act fees have both been reduced. They're now in our fee schedule, and any new application will pay these reduced fees. A few other ones that we have, we're working on here, which will take some code amendments, is we're going to give you the ability to add some conditions of approval as you move forward and review these projects. Again, that requires a code amendment, and we're going to be taking that forward in the next couple of months to commission, planning commission, city council, to get Chapter 41 or Chapter 30 amended. The other changes that require code amendments we're going to move forward to here pretty quickly is we're going to change your meeting schedule to increase the number of meetings that you're having on a yearly basis, as well as modify our database to identify structures that are 50 years or older. As you all know, that is a threshold for a structure being considered historic. So we're going to, we have an internal database that we're not going to reconfigure to be able to identify any structure that's 50 years or older. So those items are going to get done in a pretty quickly basis. We have some midterm actions which could take a few, say, a few to, say, six months, and those include updating our design guidelines that reflect historic preservation. We're going to finalize our listing and our adoption of historically sensitive neighborhoods, and then we're going to develop guidelines and policies for each of those historic neighborhoods, sensitive neighborhoods. And then finally, we have some long-term actions that could take several months, say, to a year to complete, and those include tree preservation ordinance. I know this commission is really interested in preserving historic trees and trees and historic properties, so we're going to adopt a citywide tree preservation ordinance. And then we're also going to adopt a program where we are able to designate districts to the historic register. So those are, again, some of the items that you had discussed, raised at your meetings, took forward to the city council, and they have authorized us to move forward on those actions. So be looking for updates every few months for how the progress is going on these items. So if you have any questions, I'm available. If not, I'll turn it over to Min. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. So the other two items I would like to discuss with the commission first is 625 Cypress. I know there's been quite a few communications to both.
I'm sorry, Min, can you hold on for just a second? Because I was going over on our HRC memorandum, because I spoke before the city council. Took me two hours and 45 minutes to talk three minutes on July 7. Boy, I tell you, that was interesting meeting there. But anyway, in there you also have that we, the heightened administrative review that is on that, is that in here on the follow-up? Because that was important, that would allow the historic resource commission the ability to impose conditions on approval of historic application and increase the frequency on there. The most important thing was that we had the condition of approval and so forth.
Yes, Chairwoman, Vince Fregoso, and yes, that is on to the short-term action items. Because it's so important, we're going to move forward on that really quickly, and that's that second bullet point you see there, the conditions to historic applications. So this slide here is just a summary of the items. Everything that we took in that memorandum to city council that got approved will be implemented, so.
Okay, and what about the enforcement? That was the most important thing. Where in here is the enforcement part that was approved?
The enforcement of the conditions that you add on the properties.
It said historic resource protection and enforcement. I don't see where that's listed here.
If enforcement was approved as part of the council action, then that will be included in this action as well.
Okay, that's the most important, that is an important one as far as what kind of enforcement actions are we, we take, especially with the demolition and alterations.
Yes.
Alterations, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yes.
Alterations of structures and so forth that's on there. And that's where we really have seen problems come in. So we now have the enforcement, and we now have the ability to really protect these from the demolitions, right?
Yes, we have the process in place.
I'm sorry. Is that a yes?
Yes, you're correct. We have an enforcement process in place, plus we have a team, an historic preservation team, Jola Rabi and Pedro Gomez, that they're charged with review on all these applications and monitoring any type of alterations or demolitions of any structures that are 50 years or older.
Okay. If that was, the commission was really concerned about that, especially with some of the projects that are currently in the city and really, you know, were not protected, you know, before historic sites. But we now have the authority to more or less what we didn't have before in order to protect these sites, right? We have a little more to, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next, I'm sorry, go ahead, Min, I'm sorry.
So in regards to 625 Cypress, the former fire station, a brief history, the property was listed as a key property historic listing number 15, and that was then back in 1997. The city does own the property and has been using the building as an office, however, and community standard, however, that site has been vacant, I believe, since 2014. And in February of this year, on February 18th, the city council approved the disposition of the property through the Land Surplus Act that was, became effective on 1/1/2020. Based on the Land Surplus Act, through the disposition process, the city has to offer first the property to either affordable housing developer or school district regional uses or as open space. Since the property is a listed historical resource on the city historical listing, obviously, you know, none of those in terms of currently an open space or anything that would demolish the property could be completed. Any type of use that is going to be on the property would have to restore and rehabilitate the building since it's affected. So this is to address one of the concerns about preservation of the building. It is already a historical resource, and preservation tools are already in place. The building is protected under Chapter 30 of the municipal code that says that any modification, demolition of the building would require the city review prior to any of that work can be done. So having said that, the, as I mentioned, the city council did approve the disposition of the property. The community development agency is currently working with the Parks and Recreation Agency, going through the process of accepting submission of proposals. The proposal period has ended. There were two proposals received. One was determined into an affordable housing project. The other one, I believe, dropped off the list. So there's still some consideration being considered. They're working through the negotiation and discussion on whether or not the proposal to reuse the building as an affordable house, you know, project is feasible. One of the conditions, if and when there is any type of agreement made, is that the property will have to contain or preserve on the exterior pursuant to our preservation requirements. In addition to that, there will be a plaque memorizing the original use as a fire station should excel in the future, either to a market rate developer or to an affordable housing developer for this property. So as of date, the property is secure with fencing as well as enhanced covering using a metal screen system. In addition to that, there is 24-hour, 24/7 security watch of the site, as I understand it, and at a rate about almost $20,000 a month for the 24/7 security of the building. That concludes my summary of the information to date on 625 Cypress.
Madam Chair, could I ask you a question? Tim Rush?
Yes, Commissioner Rush, go ahead.
Executive Director Min Thai, could you tell me again what was the monthly cost for security?
Almost, I understand it's almost, it's by 18 plus, so I round it off to 20.
$20,000 a month?
For 7, 24/7 security.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just wanted to be clear. All right.
Any other commissioner comments?
Yes, Commissioner Peña Sarmiento. I wanted to know what were the conditions on this property when it was put on the surplus property list?
So it must be offered initially for the purpose of developing affordable housing, open space, or school and educational uses. So meaning that, you know, the first, during the first 6A on the Land Surplus Act, it can only be detained for those type of proposal. Now, if those proposal doesn't pan out, and if they don't meet the goal of the city, then that, after that process, it can be offered out to the open market for a proposal on the reuse of that building and that site. But as a condition of the process, as a city, a local condition, because it is a historic resource that's been listed, the existing building has to be preserved, and especially in terms of the interior of the building, and also a plaque would have to be placed to demolish the former use as a fire station.
And what were the two offers on the property? One was for affordable housing, and what was the other?
I think the one, the only one that they're indicating right now is for an affordable house.
And does that proposal, does that require demolition of the property? It's a very small property.
So as I mentioned, it cannot demolish the building. Any proposal requires the reuse of that building.
But they would only save the exterior like they did on the property down in, off of Fourth Street, right? And so it could just be, just the facade and the rest of the building could be demolished if that's put under review and approved, correct? Because they would have to go up on such a small park.
They would have to be, they would have to be restored. The property is residential. Property is on R2, so only residential can be a reuse of that site.
Okay, but it was used for nonprofit office space, correct?
That was when it was a city property. City is disposing it as an R2 property.
Is there any way to remove this property from the surplus property list? Because, as you know, many people have written that there was no real, there was no opening for the community to rally around it or to advocate for it, because it was just kind of slipped under as a, in the report, it doesn't list all the interests that the community had in it. It didn't list all of the advocacy for this property and all of the years of neglect that the community tried to escape off. And so the council was really not aware of the history of this property when they made that choice to put it on the surplus property list. The community was not given an opportunity to advocate for it. Is there any way that can be taken into account and remove this property from the surplus property list?
The decision to surplus the property was approved by council back in February of this year, and that was taken the council and was approved by the city council. So in order for it not to be surplus, the council would have to then provide that direction to the staff. Currently, the building is being owned and managed by the Parks and Recreation Department, and through their review of the site, they provided the recommendation to the council. Council approved that recommendation, and this is the reason why we are where we are.
I understand, but that recommendation to council, the staff report was full of errors and omissions, as you're aware. And I'd be happy to provide a list of all those errors and omissions to the rest of my commission members. I could do that now if needed, but there is a very long history of how... Um, I could do that now if needed, but there is a very long history of how flawed that report that city council used to base their vote on. So since that report was in such error and had so many of, uh, omissions, and because Parks and Rec was, had, had actually in writing, already committed to several people that they would be kept abreast of the property, and nobody was notified of this property being, uh, you know, potentially put up on the surplus property list. Nobody was notified at all from Parks and Rec, which seems like there have been, like the process was not followed with this property, and so once again, uh, what can be done to remedy the situation since it was erroneously voted on by city council because of a flawed, very flawed, uh, report by staff?
I, I would, uh, I would advise a couple actions that you can take as, um, you know, as a, um, community member. Um, I will forward your concern to the, uh, executive director of, uh, the CBA agency, as well as the Park and Recreation Agency, um, and, you know, and have him reach out to you and have this discussion. Um, you know, the, the update here is that the building is a protected building. Um, it, you know, it is a building that is been lifted. Um, so in terms of the, uh, the role and responsibility of HRC as a historic commission, that has, that action has been taken to protect the building. It's the question of ownership of who is the ownership of that building, and that question, I believe, is best addressed through CBA and, uh, and, and the Parks and Recreation Agency and the city council.
May I, may I also ask that then, when you do that, that you also, um, include the city manager?
Absolutely, I can.
On that, okay? Uh, just to add to that correspondence on that, so that we will have, um, uh, Commissioner Penya Sarmiento will, you know, uh, kind of elevate your concerns up to the top, okay? I hope you don't mind me including that.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely not, I, I will, I will include the city manager. The second item I wanted to, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I just said thank you.
Oh, okay, got it. The second item I wanted to bring forth through the commission and provide you with an update is that, um, we are, uh, looking at taking a vacancy ordinance, uh, protection ordinance to city council for consideration, um, as you, uh, are, uh, you know, where we've been working on this for the past, um, a couple months, and we believe we have a draft ordinance that will help to address, uh, vacant commercial, vacant residential, um, and also as well as addressing any vacant historic property in the city. Um, we are building upon the exposure, uh, property registration program that we have currently, required by ordinance that any property, um, that, uh, is going to be vacant, uh, for an extended period of time, either through, um, you know, inability to lease or through redevelopment, uh, application, they would have to register with the city. Um, it would have to provide maintenance, security, uh, annual, uh, inspection, as well as monitoring, ongoing monitoring, uh, which increases the, um, protection of building and also decreases the fight and, and, um, you know, nuisance issue that, um, associated with vacant buildings that are unattended. Uh, that proposed ordinance, uh, will take to the city council on August eighteenth. Uh, again, this was also, uh, the HRC was a part of the driving force behind pushing, uh, protection of historic properties, uh, due to recent, uh, incidents in the city relating to the church. Um, and that ordinance that will be forth will address that issue on and on going forward, should it be adopted by the council. And that concludes my, um, update on the couple items, um.
Uh, 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 Executive Director Thai, on, on that ordinance that's coming up for the city council, send that out to the commissioners, and then also the date, and that make sure commissioners that, I mean, it's going to be virtual, right? It's, um, with no more going through the.
Yes, it's still going to be virtual unless, uh, anything changed between now and August eighteenth, which I don't see that, but as soon as a final draft is ready, I will certainly send the copy out to the commission.
And I hope that everyone, um, like I said, I mean, the other one, I stood two and a half, two hours and forty-five minutes, but it was worth it to hear, you know, from the coun, uh, from the commissioners, that on the virtual ones, that we do call in and raise our hands and, and promote this because we don't want, what was it, the Presbyterian Church? Cause I guess that was, is it Presbyterian Church that burned?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, that was in neglect out there for so long that, um, um, we don't want any more of our properties burned and, and with, um, and with frightening the is the climate that's, that's in our nation today, especially targeting historic places and people and so forth. We really got to protect our city. We really do. And maybe that's because I've been through, this would be my fourth kind of riot situation that I've been through, and it's frightening, absolutely frightening. And when I was at the city council meeting, uh, with all those people there yelling and screaming and so forth, I really was brave, but I ducked out and so forth, and I'm just saying, man, do we really have to protect our, our, our property and so forth because of the fact with their anger and the vibe of their anger, who knows? They could have come in and just went wild and rampant through the city, city hall there and, 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 and go from there. And so I do hope that we all get in and really put pressure on the city to really help us in preserving these, these structures. I mean, you know, we can't erase history. I don't care how much they try to do, but we really have to protect it and so forth. So I really encourage everyone, uh, on, it's August eighteenth, if I understand correctly, Executive, uh, Director Min, uh, Thai, that it is the.
It's up to, it's up to, it's scheduled for August eighteenth.
I'm sorry?
It's being scheduled for August eighteenth, and as soon as I have a draft, um, uh, approved and ready, uh, I will distribute to the commission.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so, um, I'm charging all the commissioners to please be there and raise your hands and speak up, okay? All right. Thank you so much. Uh, anything else, uh, from staff?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Great report, thank you. Uh, and now I want to go back to consent item B and to excuse the absence of Commissioner Rivera. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Uh, who was that?
Uh, this is, uh, Commissioner Rush.
Commissioner Rush, move. Second?
Yes, yes.
There is second? Hello? Did everybody hear me? Is there a second in the motion for the accused absence of Commissioner, uh, Rivera?
Chair Christie, uh, this is Janelle Hardy, I will second.
Thank you so much. Okay, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hiddardale.
Yes.
Commissioner Marashi.
Yes.
Commissioner Rush.
Yes.
Commissioner Penya Sarmiento.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Yes.
And Chair Christie.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero with Felix Rivera absent.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Now we move into, uh, Commissioner member comments. Uh, uh, Madam Secretary, call the, call the roll, please. Commissioner comments, anybody? I don't know.
Commissioner comments? None?
Commissioner Hardy, uh, Sarah, are you calling?
Oh, would you like?
I'm not calling. Not that I know of, but it's, did you, is it time for the comments for us to all make our?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Um, I'd like to congratulate you, uh, Alberta and Tim on your victory, um, as, uh, our new chairperson and co-chair of HRC. And, um, also congratulate Larry and Sandra for, uh, being our ad hoc committee for the, um, historic preservation award program. And I'd like to welcome Sandra to the, um, the commission. And thank Vince and Melanie and Min and all the staff for their hard work and their reporting back to us about all these, uh, important issues. And I'll just let it go out there. I have a lot more to say, but I'll just let it go there. Thank you.
Commissioner Hiddardale.
Uh, yes, I would be, uh, would be welcome our new member, Commissioner Penya Sarmiento, to the commission. I look forward to working with you, and I want to, uh, congratulate, uh, Chair Christie and, uh, Vice Chair Rush on, uh, on their elections and their leadership positions. And, uh, thanks to the staff, uh, for, uh, all who were involved in the work on this, uh, historic resources element, uh, of the general plan. I think it's a very important issue of general plan that is well put together, and thanks particularly to, uh, Executive Director Thai for his hard work, uh, on the site of the fire station or the other, uh, issues he brought up.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Marashi.
I just want to, uh, congratulate, uh, Chairperson Alberta Christie, and congratulations to Vice Chair Rush. Welcome our new Commissioner, Penya Sarmiento. Uh, thanks staff for all the hard work they've done, and, uh, a little update on the rural parks historic district with the COVID stuff that canceled a lot of the, uh, state historical commission meetings, so still waiting to hear back on that.
Okay. Commissioner Rush.
Uh, hello. Well, I certainly will echo a lot of the other comments. Uh, congratulations to Alberta on your, on your reappointment as chair. Uh, I want to thank especially Ed Marashi for his magnanimous and gracious comments, uh, to, to, uh, port his own nomination and put me in the running. That was very kind of you and, and very nice comment. I sincerely appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Um, and I want to welcome, uh, Sandra, uh, Sarmiento to the, uh, to our group, and I hope that you will enjoy your tenure on our body. I do want to thank the staff, uh, Min and Vince and, and your staff and Melanie for all of your hard work, Pedro and, uh, so forth for, uh, what you did. I know you guys worked hard to, um, convey this to the council, uh, what HRC wanted, and we were successful in getting passage of the package in its entirety. I think that, I think that's remarkable, uh, especially when you also consider that it, a significant rollback of the fees, which we have been advocating for some time, but I, I, uh, I want you to know that that certainly does not go as unnoticed, and I know it was twice the work, given the pandemic environment that we're all operating in. Just, just our own meeting is so convoluted and complicated because it's difficult to hear, people are, people are home, at work, in the car, uh, God knows where, so, um, uh, technology even being what it is, it's less than perfect. So, um, thank you again for that hard work. Um, I do want to congratulate or thank Alberta as chair for showing up at the council meeting to speak on behalf of passage of this package. I did come down to the council meeting, and when I saw, when I drove in and I drove up to that mob of people and saw the two hundred, uh, assembled, uh, um, folks there, and it was about, it was about ninety degrees at that time of day, uh, and the prospect of standing out in the sun waiting to speak, I have to say that my democratic ideals wilted in the sun, and, um, but I'm thankful that Alberta, um, who must have had a parasol and her, um, a bottle of water, um, chose to stay and speak for us. So thank you, Alberta.
Thank you.
And, um, I guess that's, I guess that's all I have to say. We continue to operate under constraints. I, I, I would like to say I'm thankful that staff is moving forward with this ordinance to address historic or historically sensitive vacant buildings, as you all know, because of the loss of the, the, uh, the Presbyterian Church, that has been the, sort of lit the fire, no pun intended, uh, to, to make this ordinance happen, and hopefully that'll be the good that comes out of it. Um, and I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not unsympathetic that building owners in Santa Ana struggle because they have vacancy constraints, uh, but I just think a lot of them, uh, it's easier to leave them vacant than it is to work to get them occupied, and we need to incentivize that. So anyway, I thank you all, and thank you for the vote confidence in, uh, electing me as vice chair. So that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Penya Sarmiento.
Thank you, Chair Christie. Thank you for your leadership and, uh, and welcoming me to the commission. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Rush, uh, on, uh, on being vice chair, and thank you, Janelle, for nominating me to the ad hoc. Uh, I also want to thank staff for their presentation, and I really want to thank our, um, our residents, uh, Manny Asamia, Celica Diaz, Chris Schmidt, and all the others that wrote in to take an active part in, uh, making their, their voice known. Uh, I just want to say that, you know, Capistrano and Santa Ana are Orange County's two most historic cities. You know, really, the whole story of the county really largely resides with us, and as custodians, we have a, a very important responsibility to preserve as much of that history as possible. So I really hope that we can, you know, work together to establish a good protocol when there is a, a, uh, city-owned historic property, uh, in play, and that we can find a way to work the voice and the, and the, and the collective efforts of our residents, and we can take that into, into account as we decide what to do with these properties. So I really hope that we can find a way, a bridge to return the Cypress Street Fire Station to the community, really needs, uh, community assets, like, uh, we could really use another library in that area, digital library. There've been a lot of great proposals, so I really hope we can examine that and, uh, and also preserve our, uh, other historic assets and our historic mural. So I really look forward to helping, uh, create a, a list, a, a listing of all our wonderful historic treasures in our city and doing, uh, the best we can to create policy to preserve and protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Schaefer.
Yes, um, first of all, I'd like to welcome Sandra to the, uh, commission, and really great words you just spoke, and, um, I, I'm glad to hear your passion you have for, uh, things historic in Santa Ana and Orange County. So welcome, um, and also congratulations to, uh, Tim for being elected vice chair. I've been in that role and chair prior to that for many years, so felt it was my time to, uh, let someone else step up, and I do agree with Ed that Tim has done, uh, so very much. Regarding the Cypress Fire Station, I'd like to say that, um, I know, uh, a few years ago, not that long ago, maybe two or three years ago, the Santa Ana Library was looking at, uh, moving their. uh, moving their history room to that location, but apparently because of lack of funding on the library budget, uh, that got pushed to the side. Something like that would be such a good use for the city. Um, I think it's tragic how it's, uh, been kind of kicked to the ass, and it's a beautiful building that's built on this commission. I admired that building and thought, oh, wouldn't that be a good property to do something with? Um, having said all that, I'd like to ask that tonight we adjourn our meeting in, uh, memory and honor of, um, Robson, who was an amazing historian, uh, former member of our commission, and, uh, just a great guy for Santa Ana, he was on the, uh, city council, on the school board, and, uh, spent his entire life teaching in Santa Ana, so, um, a request for tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like, uh, first of all, to welcome, um, Commissioner Penya Sarmiento and Sandra. Thank you so much, and we can just tell your passion for, that you have for this commission, and you're going to be a great asset in addition to that. And, um, thank you all for, um, for having the confidence to elect me again as chair, and welcome aboard Tim, looking forward to working with you, and for Phil, thank you so much for the years that you and I have worked together in, um, and, and guiding me on some of the things that we've done in the, in the past. Um, um, Larry and Sandra, you are going to have a great time on this ad hoc committee because there is, uh, I've got wind of the nominations that are coming through through our historic, uh, preservation awards, and boy, you're going to have a tough time, okay? But you're going to have a great time, because there's a lot of, uh, there are, uh, a couple of applications that are in that are well, well-deserving on this. And, uh, so you're really going to enjoy that commission and everything. And I'd like to, um, thank the staff once again, uh, on the reduction of the fees. Everybody, let's give them a hand, come on. Yeah, I mean, you know, in, in coming together and getting what we recommended, you know, when we all came together last October, and we sat down because, you know, before, everybody was frustrated, we could find out what we could and couldn't do, and what we thought we could do, and what staff thought they could do, they couldn't. But we came together, that's the most important thing. We came together, worked out everything, and put it in a recommendation to the city council that made sense, absolutely made sense. So, uh, and I'm looking forward to this other ordinance that's coming up on the 18th, and, and, and for it to pass also on this, uh, you know, and, and really come out and support, uh, support this. And, um, um, yes, um, uh, I will ask for adjournment of my, my good friend, Rob Richardson. Not only was he, you know, he was on the city council, okay, and I knew him, and we've been together up and down, and he was a mentor on that city council. If you wanted to know, if you had an issue that you weren't quite sure of, you go to Rob, and Rob would direct you into a, a situation, a better understanding of one that really benefits. He loves Santa Ana. He absolutely loves Santa Ana, and, and preserving this history, the trains and everything. He was a Renaissance man. That's a good example of everything that he's done for our city, for the county, for the neighborhoods. I mean, what an honor it is to have all the flags in the city at half-mast that tells you how great of an individual and treasure he was, and it's great work. So with that, I'd like to, our next meeting will be on Thursday, October 1st, 2020, at four thirty, and then I would like to adjourn the meeting in the name of the Honorable Rob Richardson. With that, and with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Hello?
Yes, uh-
Anybody?
Yes, Chair Christie, this is Larry Hiddardale. Uh, I moved to adjourn and certainly seconded everything you had to say about Rob Richardson. He was just a wonderful person.
Okay. Commissioner Hiddardale, move. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second. Commissioner Schaefer.
Uh, Phil Schaefer, okay, thank you. Um, I'm assuming and calling the meeting, um, uh, to, uh, to adjourn at six twenty-three. Okay, have a great evening, everybody.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great evening.
Hi, Alberta.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night, thank you.